Can you hear me now? Can you hear me, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, good. So we are taking public comment in one of four ways. You can have dropped information off at the blue Dropbox out in front of the township building. We have checked the drop box late this afternoon and there was no public comment in it. You can also raise your hand during the meeting or through the phone option through Zoom. You can also raise your hand and we will recognize you if you happen to be doing that. Finally, you can send public comment to the email address publiccomment@newtown township.org. Again, that's publiccomment@newtown township.org. During the time in which we're doing these meetings hybrid, which will probably be for at least the month of February, we are taking public comment that way even during the meeting. Once we get to the into where we're going back to in-person meetings, you can give your comment, but you would need to do it before 3:00 PM prior to the meeting. That's the instructions, Mr. Chairman. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Neese, and I will call the February 14, 2022 meeting to order. We can do, well, before we get into the roll call, I will make an announcement that we, the board met in an executive session first on Wednesday, February 9th at 6:45 to discuss personnel matters, establishing goals for the township manager. And then also this evening, we met at 6:00 PM to discuss five matters, three personnel and two legal. With that, I will ask for a roll call.
Yes, Mr. Alteri.
Here.
Ms. Roberts, like, Mr. Partridge, Mr. Russo.
Here.
Ms. Chanless, your special counsel, engineer and manager are here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Neese. We'll now have a moment of silence. Unlike my predecessor, I can't think of something for every meeting, so we will just do a traditional moment of silence for this evening. And we'll stand for the pledge. The pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. For which stands one nation. Indivisible, liberty.
Now I may entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Is there any motion to approve or correct the agenda? Right, well, I guess.
Yeah, so. Item thirteen dot one. Reads, change it to read, "A $500 deposit will be put into an escrow account, which will be credited after the purchase." Will be placed into an escrow account. Will be placed. The ad will be placed and then.
Thirty point seven.
Seven. Yeah, seven. We want to eliminate the last four. Words in the sentence, so it should read, "Consider approving the hiring of an administration assistant." That's it.
That's your motion? Is there a second? Motion has been made to, made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanless to agenda, amend the agenda as was just presented. Is there any other board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Now move down to public comment for agenda items only. Is there any public comment in the box, Mr. Neese?
Mr. Rosenthal, if you unmute, you should be able to see.
Louis Rosenthal, 20 Harrison Drive. On agenda items thirteen, one and thirteen, two, they appear to be related. I'm just hoping that we get a meaningful level of detail for the residents on. I'm not, thirteen, one actually refers to an agreement of sale and then references a purchase. So I'm assuming you, the town is agreeing to purchase, not agreeing to sell. And so I'm just sort of curious is what the town may be buying for $210,000. That's it. Thank you.
I don't see any. I do have one public comment that's in email, but it's not related to anything that's on the agenda tonight. So we will take it at the end. When we look at it.
To proceed.
Yes.
And let the record show there's no one in the audience who has come up to the podium either. We'll now move down the minutes. The minutes for the January 24, 22 meeting will be approved at our next meeting. They were not able to be prepared, so we're going to skip that. We're going to move down to appointment to boards and commissions. I get a motion to for the Marple Newtown Leisure Services Committee, excuse me. Can I get one open position motion for the one open position expiring 12/31/2022? Can I get a name? Professor Chanless, I believe you interviewed for that. You did the interviews for that. Tom Rafferty? Is that your motion? There a second?
Thank you.
Motion was made by Supervisor Chanless to approve Tom Rafferty for the one open position expiring 12/31/2022, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Word up.
Nine point two.
I just would, Mr. Chairman, since Supervisor Roberts, like, kept stepped out, I would just make him, just for the record, that's a four to zero, but for those who are at home and maybe didn't see that.
Now move down to nine point two, the rail trail feasibility study. I will make the motion for these individuals and then I'm going to have something I need to share in public comment. So one representative from the Parks and Rec Board, it is my understanding that Parks and Rec has nominated Peter Lake. One representative from the Trails and Greenways Committee, my understanding is that that committee has recommended Joseph Falcon Esquire. And then the three representatives from the public who have applied and shown interest in this are Patricia Davis, Kristoffano and Bill Mills. So that is my motion.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Partridge. When I move into board discussion, the only thing I want to add to this is this committee, as we've said before, it's a five-member committee that will study the feasibility of the rail trail. Obviously, we understand that it can be sensitive to some individuals, which is why we made sure that the three residents who are making up this committee are individuals whose property abuts to where the proposed rail, where the proposed trail line will go. So these are three individuals who have a vested interest in this project. We have a diverse group of opinions. I know for a fact there's someone who is vehemently opposed to it. The others, you know, are sort of just, you know, going to continue to go along with the process and see where it goes. What this committee will do over the next year, year and a half, is work with the consultant that they select and come to this board with a recommendation to study, again, the feasibility, to see whether it's feasible from a practical standpoint, to see whether it's feasible from an economic standpoint, and to see whether it's feasible from even a legal standpoint. There will be multiple, multiple community interactions with this committee and the residents whose property abuts this trail line. My understanding is that the draft RFP, which this committee will approve, is calling for somewhere upwards to 50 hours of community involvement. This will be a very neighbor-heavy consensus, a very neighbor-heavy focus. So again, this board is cognizant of the fact that this is controversial in a way, if you will. But what we will do is, is have this board or have this committee, excuse me, do their study and come back to us with a recommendation. And that's all I just wanted to add. I wanted to really just focus on the fact that these three residents are residents whose backyards are to this trail. Are there any other board discussion on this? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And I would say, Mr. Neese, that is now five to nothing. Vote now that Supervisor Roberts, like, has returned. Well, now move down to reports, ten point one, report from the township manager, Mr. Neese.
Yes, I believe that the last meeting, Mr. Russo had requested an update of where we were related to capital purchases and we can go into more detail, but basically George and his team have been working with our vendors, trying to get updated prices. And as difficult it is, it's been with the supply chain to sometimes even get to the place where we can purchase and move forward on some things where even just like the speed tables, we've been waiting on the vendor to get back to us with the latest prices as well as the doing it the way we had asked them to do. So we are not prepared to give you a request for taking action on any certain thing from the Capitol tonight. But just know that we are, the Public Works team is working on multiple approaches to that. And if you want more information, Mr. Sherritts is here and will speak to it, but I'll leave that up to you.
Can you give us an update in two weeks at the twenty meeting on the twenty?
I believe we'll be in a better position to do that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The only other thing I would say is, I think we included in your packet the thank you letter from CRC for our gifts during the 2021 year. I hope you had a chance to see that. We typically give a gift of the 250 is our membership and then the 150 for the dinner. We buy, we buy a ticket for that usually. But this year, because of the grant related to the park across the way, they helped us lay out the trees and all of that. We actually gave them a grant of $11,000. It was basically a pass-through grant to them. So they sent us a thank, nice thank you, and I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. That's it.
Questions for Mr. Neese from the board. Seeing none, we'll now move down to the payments, eleven point one, consider approving the $203.50 escrow release payment to Derek McDonald at 37 Sugar Maple Drive for a completed graded project. Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those signify by saying aye. All opposed, carries unanimously. Bills. I will make a motion to approve the bills on 2021 check registry A dated February 14, 2022, totaling $24,849.63. Can I get a second? Motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like, cap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Twelve point two, I'll make a motion to approve the bills on check registry A dated February 14, 2022, totaling $269,591.51. Motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like, cap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Twelve point three, make a motion to approve bills on EFT register dated February 14, 2022, totaling $626.87. Motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Well, now move down to new business, thirteen point one, consider approving the agreement of sale of four vacant parcels of land located on or around Walnut Street at a cost of $210,000. A deposit of $500 will be placed into an escrow account, which will be credited after the purchase. Believe I said that correctly? Motion was, is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like, cap. Is there any board discussion? Any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? This is a new item.
Mr. Chairman, just responding to the public comment, it was earlier, if you'd like.
Please.
I think I would make note that these parcels actually are, would be contiguous to a piece of property that the township already owns along Locust. And you might say, I thought they were on Walnut. These properties actually run down and there's, they actually run between Walnut and Locust, between the two streets, and then there are some pieces that run out and collect out to College. They, this would help expand some green space and keep some area in the township green and it's also a very low spot in the town. And this is where some water sits, so it would protect that area as well. And so that's the purpose of the purchase of this property.
Thank you very much, Mr. Neese. All right. So now, as I said, the motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like, cap. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed. And I will actually abstain from this, just because it's near my, my property and I just think it's better to err on the side of caution on this one. So the vote will be four, zero to one.
And I will. Mr. Chair, there, I would make note, and I realize that we've taken public comment. The party who asked the question earlier has raised his hand again.
Let him speak.
Just a couple of, Lewis Rosenthal, 20 Harrison. Just a couple of clarifying questions. One, are there taxes that will no longer be paid to the township and/or Delaware County as a result of these being acquired by the township? Number two, it's a, we're purchasing, this is not, the way I read this, it looked like we were selling the parcels and then we're making a purchase. So this is just an outright purchase. The agreement of sale sort of threw me off.
Mr. Secora, Mr. Neese, whoever wants to answer that.
I would answer for the purpose of taxes, obviously, if the township takes ownership. And as long as we are not using it for a purpose that is not for the public good, then we would not be paying taxes on, I'm probably not saying, I'm using two negatives, I may be saying that wrong. We would not be paying taxes on it as long as it's either open space or we're using it for the public good. If we were to ever use it for something that was not that way, we potentially would be paying taxes to the county and to the school district, but that's not the case here. We would be using it for public good. The second piece, if I recall, this is just a purchase. It's, it's an agreement of sale between the landowner and us to sell the property to us, but we are the ones purchasing.
Thank you.
Well, now move to thirteen point two, consider approving a $500 payment to Joseph V. Catania Esquire to hold in escrow for the purchase of four vacant parcels of land located on or around Walnut Street. Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? Yes.
That is correct.
Is there any virtual public comment, Mr. Neese?
I do not see any.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries four, zero with one abstention. Again, I will be abstaining because of what our long-term goals are for these two parcels, or for these parcels, I should say. Thirteen point three, discussion about the newsletter as well as direction to staff.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll recall, one of our goals that we had for the year was to actually have a newsletter out to the public on eight different occasions. And we were doing that through two different mailings. One mailing was going to be through our hometown press, which would be strictly a township newsletter, which would have some advertising in it and, and we were, and we were doing that in the, since 2015, we've been working with the school district and with the Marple Newtown Leisure Services in putting out a communication piece to the residents of not only Newtown, but the residents of Marple that was coming out in a magazine that most people saw that was titled In Community. And so we took turns, who was on the cover? And we did that and we, like I said, have been doing that since 2015. We were informed late last month that In Community was no longer going to be doing anything on the eastern side of the state. They were going to go back and go back to just the western side of the state. And so the township has been working with the school district and looking at solutions. And at this point, we've been going back and forth and are looking at a couple of solutions. But I wanted just to make sure, two things, that one, that the board is still wanting to do this, understanding that probably the cost, I think we were paying about $1,200 per quarter to do this. I think the cost is probably going to be pushing closer to $6,000. And so I just want to make sure that you're kind of aware of that in that communications, because I know our goal was to be out about every six weeks or so in front of folks. But the school district's very interested and still moving forward with this. So is leisure services and I just wanted, as we're negotiating with them and talking with them, I just want to make sure that you're, you're one aware of kind of where we think the costs are going to be. We don't have anything final right now. I'll be back with you with final numbers, but I don't want to go down the road and say to the school district, yes, I think we're doing this. If the board is like, no, we're not any, we don't even want to go that far. First per per issue. Would be, this would be four issues at this price. Versus, I think we, I think we originally budgeted 1,200 per issue, which would have been 4,800. So yeah, 4,800 versus 24.
We went to twice, twice a year instead of quarterly. We could take it down to 12,000. What was the other, what was the other in community price?
In community price, we were paying, I believe it was 1,200 per, per quarter.
Were there, were there any other? Provide, I mean, I guess you're saying you've looked at all the other providers and the least expensive?
Yeah, I mean, just to give you an idea, if you'll remember in, I think it was August and October, we did a mailing separately last year that you, you saw that we put out. Each one of those was about 12,000 apiece. Just to give you an idea of what it, you know, what those cost to get out, they're very, it's, they're expensive. It's expensive to do that kind of a mailing when you're doing it kind of on your own. This particular piece that I'm, I'm still waiting for some clarification and that's why I, I think we're going to be potentially coming back to you is this particular one would be without advertising. This would just be the three without advertise, you know, that would be where we would be without doing advertising is what I've been told. I'm just kind of struggling in that the number seems really low to me compared to what we were paying on the other side. And so I'm, I'm looking for more detail from this. It would be using Franklin. It would be the group is who's giving us the quote right now. And so I'm, I'm waiting for more confirmation on a few things. And the school district has kind of taken the lead in trying to do the communication and they're getting information. And we, I asked some more questions on Friday afternoon, hoping that I would have the answers today and we hadn't gotten back yet. So that's why I'm not bringing a final thing to you. I just kind of, I just am looking a little bit more for direction if you're still interested in me exploring this, understanding that you will have final say, you know, once we get it. But I just wanted to kind of let you know where we were. And the other piece, obviously. And I don't want to, we're paying by the page is how we're doing it. But for us, that means we're also paying by the page to mail it to Marple residents. And so theoretically, I could go back to the school district and to the, to the Marple Leisure Services and say, you ought to be actually paying more per page because you're getting more benefit because the township really doesn't care. The challenge is, Marple Leisure Services on one level is if, if they have more cost, it probably comes back to us at the end of the day anyhow. So, you know, potentially they would be asking us for more revenue to help offset that. So anyway, I'm just throwing that out there. Those are the things I'm looking at. And if you have direction on how you want me to approach that, that would be helpful as well.
Well, rather than direction, I can you get back to us then on the 28th with, with all?
Hopefully I'll have finals at that point, but I guess I'm just, I, I just want to make sure that as I'm having conversations both with the school district and Marple Leisure Services and whoever the provider is, that we're at least still semi-interested. If you said, no, you're not, you don't want to do this because it's so far more than what we had budgeted, I also, that's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we, we've said, I mean, it's one of the things that been identified in the strategic plan is, is, is communication. And I think that we've done a good job over the last two years of expanding that directive. But I, so I think that any avenue that we can go after is something we should go after. One question I do have, maybe something you can report back to us, though. What does Marple Township do? I know that they, they never participated in In Community because they kind of had their own thing. What is it that they do and is it, is it, can we do something similar? Is it cheaper? What are they doing?
Well, they are actually using Franklin to do their newsletter. I thought they were going to approach Marple about us joining in and maybe they had and Marple said, no, we're not interested, which I would understand. We, we've made the decision to go with hometown press because we wanted our own piece, you know, we wanted something in addition to what we were doing. And so so I totally understand that and from that point. And I don't know that's what they said, but that's what I was, it wasn't surprising to me that Marple wasn't wanting to join with that.
Do we save anything by, you know, not to ask you to negotiate in bad faith, but do we save anything by cutting Marple out and Leisure Services and doing something exclusively just for Newtown or it's less pages? I doubt you're going to have that much content. Right, if it's five, I mean, I get, I get really paid for six, but.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it depends on who I talk to. I have somebody who if I, who would take six pages every time I put out the newsletter.
Let the record show, George Sherritts.
Raises his hand. And, and I understand why. I mean, it's, there's so much that we do related to public works and stormwater and, and recycling. And I mean, it really, it, it takes a lot. I've been actually approached by the Business Association. I've been approached by other organizations to go in with us on this. And so that is a question that we have to kind of try to grapple with as we go forward. I can look to see whether it's advantageous. Do we, do I approach hometown to look at saying, can we do six a year or seven a year or eight a year on our own? I, I will say this, there are times that some of what's in our newsletter, and I would target it more to this, that we might aim for students that are in the school district. And I understand they're not necessarily Newtown residents, but if it's going into those homes, there might be a benefit in that that, you know, if we do a community event, we would actually have more turnout, you know, to it. So I don't want to just say there's no benefit to us, but it's our, our target is not Marple Art, which makes sense. Our target is Newtown Township, you know. So.
Because I think I'd be interested to know what the, you know, if, if there is an option for us to do it on our own.
Okay.
And maybe partner with, I mean, if you can partner with this Business Association or something. I mean, we should. Business Association or something. I mean, we should at least compare it, I think, before we increase that much. Yeah, yeah, and just get back to us.
Okay, I I I think I have enough that you you are interested in still doing something. I need to look at what the other options are. Is that fair?
I think it's fair. All right. Any other discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move down to thirteen point four. Consider approving the authorization of staff to dispose of six desktop computers. The hard drives have all been removed and given to the township's IT company for sale for safe disposal. Excuse me. Motion was made made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Robert Slaycap. Is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thirteen point five. Consider authorizing advertisement of the 2022 line restoration project. Is there a second? Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Robert Slaycap. Mr. Nice or Mr. Sharretts, who wants to talk about this?
So this is basically, you know, when you see the line striping on the roads, that's what this is for. We were trying to get out early and see what we can get as a bid for doing it in 2022. We were, we'd kind of gone a little later last year and ran into some challenges. So we're we're aiming to see if we, you know, by getting out early and having more time for them to do it, do we get a better pricing? And so that's what we're trying to do.
Great. Any board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, signal all those signify by saying aye. Carries unanimously. Thirteen point six. Consider accepting the proposal from the animal warden to deter geese at Drexel Lodge Park for an initial four-month period at a cost of $3,900. Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chalice. Is there any board discussion? You want to add anything, Mr. Nice? It's pretty self-explanatory.
I I think it's pretty self-explanatory. The only thing I would mention is we're scheduled in May, George? Yeah, May to have a program. And currently, we don't know that we could have the program. There's so many goose droppings at the park. People would not be able to sit and enjoy a concert because they would be sitting in goose mess. So this is trying to tackle that. I would make note that I believe the first month is 1,200. And then each month after is 900, and we may have to. What I think we're wanting to say is we think this is the start. We may end up having to invest more to keep it that way. And we just want to make sure everybody's aware this is a start. We're hoping that it makes progress, and then we might be back to you asking for additional months.
Right, and we had talked about this previously, and I think Parks and Rec, they had that. There was one of their, they had a conversation about this with the committee.
They did.
So this has been vetted.
Perfect. Any other board discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thirteen point seven. Consider approving the hiring of an administrative assistant. Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chalice. Is there any board discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thirteen point eight. Consider authorizing the staff to acquire temporary help to fill a vacant position in administration. Any board discuss, oh, excuse me. Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chalice. Is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. She carries unanimously. All right, thirteen point nine. Staff is seeking direction related to aronicic land development plan. And I believe we have Mr. D'Amico here. So, Mr. Nice, if you want to tee it up, or Mr. Sekura want to tee it up, and the one, Mr. D'Amico?
So just so the boards are remind, a reminder to the board. I, last year, Aronim, the Aronimco, of course, came in and requested an extension on doing some stormwater management related to a patio they had put in for a golf outing. And and then it it stayed and became a permanent part, and they're actually doing a much bigger project. There, I believe they're coming in and doing a sports center and expanding the patio even more. And they're going to need to do a full stormwater program at that time. And so they had asked if they could do it all as one project. And you had given them direction that they had to be back to you by November of last year, 2021. They came back in November and basically said, we're not quite ready yet. We think we would be ready to present and give turn our information in in February and be on the March agenda. They've recently come back and said that they they're not really, really ready to make that deadline, but they really do believe they'll be able to give our information in March and then present would be then on the April Planning Commission. However, they've said, just in case something happens, instead of having to come back again, they're asking for an extension to April for the for the delivery of the land development project that it would be on the May Planning Commission for review. So that is what they're requesting. And so that's what we're looking for. Because you had given the extension initially, staff doesn't feel like it's within their purview to give those extensions related to stormwater and managing that. It would have to come from you. Staff's recommendation to you would be if you choose to do this, that, you know, you basically say if they don't get to you by April have it submitted by April to go to the Planning Commission in May, then we would be asking for the stormwater to project to for what they've already put in to be designed and done. And they can take as long as they want then going forward with the other.
Mr. Skor, do you want to add anything to that, or is that a good summarization? Good. All right, perfect. Mr. D'Amico, I guess if there's nothing that you want to add to that. Basically, that last part that Mr. Nice said, obviously taking into consideration what my my colleagues want to do here. Is there any objection to that, that you would be able to have it submitted by April and on the Planning Commission agenda for May? Let's go to the podium, just because there's people watching. Sorry.
No objection. Apologize for the delay. There's really a fucking engineer. I mean, Nelson. That started. There's just been some things with the architect trying to. Architect getting the Chester here so that and just remind cut up into two phases. Piece one. Attention. Modern. Patent. House. Find and develop. So that is part one, project. Open plan. Do the work in event.
Get the the work started in November. That's as soon as the season's over. And then we'd be coming back to you as a second phase or I would larger project in that the plan is to move eliminate the old pool, move it and build a new nicer pool. Pool's about 50, 60 years old. It's way out of date and then do some little minor modification. The tennis center, which would include some pickleball courts and things that we don't, we don't have there now. So. But yes, the answer is yes, because we got to get this done. So I think there's little to no chance that we're not going to have the land development plans in. The goal is really to get it done, to submit by March 29th for the April agenda, but I didn't want to have to come back and do this again.
Understood. Two things, and it was kind of jumped the gun, just for housekeeping, just in case there's any individuals who are watching, you can just state your name for the record. Can you represent?
Yes, my name is Mark D'Amico. I'm an attorney at 109 Chesley Drive, and I'm representing Aronimco.
Perfect. And then so just the last part, so that everyone's clear, in the event that you do not have this submitted by April for the May Planning Commission agenda, you do know then that that's when we'll essentially pull the trigger, if we will, and and have you start filing the stormwater. We're trying to accommodate you to so you don't have to do it twice. But again, this is going to be our hard and fast rule, I believe, is the the belief among my colleagues.
And if I can clarify, the design for the patio work was already completed and approved. It's just not been installed because of the larger project and the request for the delay in in putting it in. But there wouldn't need to be any heavy lift to be ready to go.
Perfect. Is, do you have anything else you want to add, Mr. D'Amico?
No.
Good. All right. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Robert Slaycap. Mr. Skor, is there anything else you want to add to that? Do you believe we're good? You're happy with it? All right. Any other board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously, and you have your extension, Mr. D'Amico.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yep, appreciate it. We'll now move down to old business 14.1. Quick update of stormwater with further discussion, which will take place at the February 28, 2022 meeting. Mr. Nice?
Yes, if you recall, we were, we did a probably at least a 45-minute, almost an hour presentation to you at the last meeting related to stormwater.
Supervisor Partridge wants that rehashed tonight, actually.
And and for all your spouses' sake, I will not. Mine too. And so I I just wanted to let you know that we've we have continued to work on it. It's been a little bit more involved and some timing has come about. We needed probably another two weeks to pull all the information together that would really help you in making decisions going forward. And so we will, we will be presenting that to you in two weeks. So on the at the meeting in the 28th, I don't see any reason at this point.
No reason at all.
Yeah, that we won't be ready. But in fact, I think we'll be reviewing it here this week and be ready to make sure we get it out and be ready to go. But we just needed a little bit more time.
So safe to say that the 28th will be a long one.
Yeah, the 28th will be a long one because I'm going to make that announcement.
All right, perfect. Is there any board discussion? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Nice. Well, now I'll move down to additional business, which I don't see any. Is there?
I'm going to actually just bring up something real quick on additional business. I just wanted to let you know that the historic preservation ordinance was advertised, and that will be also on your 28th meeting. So your issue will have a long meeting on the 28th.
So it's safe to tell them. Tell them that they come. Perfect. All right, well, now I'll move down to board comment. The only thing I want to say is Happy Valentine's Day to everyone, Happy Valentine's Day to my colleagues. On Saturday, I had the opportunity to present with Anthony DiVincenzo, who is the vice chair of the Newtown Township Trails and Greenways Committee at the Western Philadelphia Trail Summit. It was a really unique opportunity for Newtown Township to be represented there. It was virtual this year, but it was a good opportunity for us to brag about everything that we've been doing over the last two years, last three years with the adoption of the Greens and, excuse me, Greenways and Trails Master Plan, as well as the creation of the Trails and Greenways Committee. We we were able to put Newtown in a good light. We were able to showcase all the things that we're working on, and it was well received. So it was exciting being able to represent them, or being able to represent Newtown there. And it brings me to my last part, which is the Trails and Greenways Committee is having their fourth walk. It's taking place Sunday, March 6, 12:30 PM at Garrett Williamson. I do believe that they have maxed out on the registration. However, they put spots aside for us and our spouses or members of our family who want to go. If there's any vacancies that occur, they told me that the link would be updated. But this is their fourth one, and they're already at about 120 people who have registered. So it's it's been successful the last two. The the most recent one was canceled due to the snow. But, you know, the Trails and Greenways Committee is is moving, moving in shape. That's all I have for board comment. I am feeling the pressure from everyone's spouses to get out of here, so I'll stop talking now. Is there any other board comment? Is there any public comment?
I've got a hand raised. I'm not taking anything. I believe you're in twice. That's the reason why we're getting echoing.
Yeah, sorry. Let's try this. Can you? Can you hear me now?
I can.
Sorry about that. Hey, this is Joe Hay at 122 Beechwood. I appreciate all the work you guys are doing on the stormwater mitigation priority list. I'm actually back one. I couldn't get in in time, sorry. But anyway, I just wondered if that list is going to be posted before the next board meeting?
It will definitely, it was posted as part of the last agenda. I do believe it was updated. I believe that is still there. And there will be, the list will be posted again with the agenda prior to the meeting.
Now, I appreciate that. I did look at the list and I watched the last meeting and the details weren't there on the residential ones. The they had the state priorities and other ones, but I'll check it again. I didn't check it today.
If that's not the case, please let me know. We will get that out and make sure it's posted. I thought that we had come back and corrected that.
All right, I I will let you know, Steve. Thank you so much.
I I do want to make note, we do not follow comments in the chat. We do not. It's not a part of public comment. We do not do that. If you wish to make public comment, you need to raise your hand. So anything that is in the chat will not be answered and is is not part of the record, and I want to be very clear about that.
No, I appreciate it. I raised my hand first and wasn't getting through.
That's fine. Well, there's other comments, and that's why I'm that's why I just want to make sure I'm very clear that that's not part of it.
Okay. All right, thanks. I'll I'll tune in for the next meeting. Appreciate all your efforts.
Any other public comment, Mr. Nice?
I'm checking one other place and I do have a I've got a, I've got a public comment that came in. Like I said, it wasn't related to this meeting. Attention Board of Supervisors, this is from Eileen Coleman. She lists her address as 602 Summit Avenue, Newtown Square, PA. And so she says, as longtime residents of Newtown Heights.
I think you can just do a summary of it.
Yeah, it's related to the property of the
This is the public comment that was forwarded to the board.
I believe it was forwarded to you. Yes.
I believe the summary is that they were sending an email with regards to the proposed zoning change of the Quarry property between College and Ellis Avenue on West Chester Pike. They were asking us to vote against it. Is that? That was my understanding of that email. And that's how, God, Mr. Skor.
I'll just say that there's no
That was the next.
Zoning application, what was requested was
Can you just repeat that with the microphone on?
There's no zoning application pending. There was a zoning challenge. That challenge was denied. It's been appealed to the Court of Common Pleas, and that's where it is right now.
Thank you very much. No other further public comment, Mr. Nice?
No, sir.
And there's none in the audience, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.